As many speakers we can. If you are not on topic, or if you cannot tell that you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me when the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you get straight off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comments. During general public comments, members of the public may speak at any of the items, or anything else in this city's subject matter jurisdiction. But a couple more announcements, if I can have the interpreters make this first one aloud briefly. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences, so the interpreters can check it.
Siere que es para el chile en el final, por favor, para los otros. Que puede cada frase para la de interprete la oportunidad para decir.
Don't worry, we will hold your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you get the same amount of time as everyone else.
Please ask me.
You know, if we move in the house, I won't say, "Yeah, well, we're interested in that." But if I'm on those, and it's, "We don't need that," I mean, I'm not gonna be able to answer that much, so.
Weezer, I'm like, "What?"
And the fight will not end until we convene public comment, and we order that the speakers have freedom. So it asks you to wait until you give your name and call by the staff before lining up. After you give your name and call, don't fill line up in any order on your left-hand side of the counter.
Thirteen years.
I want all home names to come in first. Peter O., Jimmy Gordon, Candido, here it is.
I just wanted to video with him.
Good morning, speaker. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comments.
Uh, start with, uh, twenty-three. Uh, item twenty-three is very important, is because, um... (singing) In our hearts, we're still in the middle of a fight. We're in the middle of a war, we're in the middle of a war. She's coming, just like a beautiful picture, always in my head, I can see. We're going to go back, but can you still keep me? I'm going to be here, she's going to be there. Oh, I'm going to be there, you've been there, she's going to be there. She's going to be there, she's going to be there. Item number twenty-four is very important. (singing) I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. She's going to be there, she's going to be there. She's going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. She's going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. She's going to be there, she's going to be there. Item number twenty-five is very important, because, uh, I want to add your, add your, add your, uh, item twenty-five, no crazy. (singing) I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. Why can't we all stand in the winter, and then, I'm going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. She's going to be there, she's going to be there. I'm going to be there, she's going to be there. She's going to be there, she's going to be there. For general public comments, I am aware our city is currently in a budget deficit, so I'm here to have some, uh, several suggestions for council president. Uh, council president, I understand that you are a very proud member of Black Lives Matter, part of Jason Reedy, and many of those people, they create their OnlyFans page. And then after they have their OnlyFans page, they earn millions of billions of dollars every single year. So, council president, how you see this? If you and councilman are in it, if you consider working together, create a monthly OnlyFans subscription, and you can create a four-hour account, and I'm pretty sure that using your company tool, you can earn millions of billions of money, and you can use the millions of money of OnlyFans to solve the city budget problem. So I support our council version of OnlyFans.
If you have your time, this is prior, and before the next speaker begins, I'd just like to remind the last speaker that if you would like an interpreter, please feel free to let the first office know, and we will do our best to set that up. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comments. Go ahead.
Welcome back, motherfuckers. I'm here to introduce Housing and Community Development Program, so you dumb motherfuckers can continue to do the business of the people for the people on behalf of your dumbass mayor, your co-dumbass Negro sample, Uncle Tom, regarding the approval that the mayor subjected us with Bluefield and Miss Park Beach for the Department of Twenty Twenty-Five Recovery. What fucking recovery? We let those fucking kids destroy our community this weekend. What fucking community interest of a grant do we have there, you jackass, Jonathan? For the record, look at this other issue with Bluefield and Padilla, goddamn behavioral health. Well, some people call me fucking crazy, but smoking scan, and I'll say it again, smoking scan, for the record, caused it intelligence. Because my genius ass talks about the facts of what's happening in this fucked-up city by the fucked-up DA and this fucked-up council that has put us in a deficit. So if you don't understand that, jackass, get him back with a meal and have him kick you in the ass off, because you're too fucking stupid to understand that "I'm an American." So instruct GSD, what the asshole assistance of a city attorney dick to negotiate a purchase-sale agreement.
No, no, him, him.
Fucking council dick is free. Why? You don't know how to budget. You do not know how to save a fucking dime to budget. Work is the money coin.
I think that's the fucking district attorney.
Where? Hey, jackass Jonathan, I'm at twenty-nine, bro. Are you calling along? Good, because now I'm going to the next item in my forty seconds. Item twenty-two, homelessness.
Ask him if that's him.
Judge O. Carter.
Ask him, I'm pretty sure that's him, dude.
Do the man answer from Los Angeles.
No, I know the district attorney.
Or the fucking twenty-four million dollars that he stole for homelessness.
The district attorney is probably thirty years older than him.
Judge Carter, Derek Carter, Andy Carter.
He looks, no, he looks close, he looks close.
Once again, the county of Los Angeles is in cahoots, ripping us all off, and all you jackass have here, all you morons, idiots, stupid to have a job have to provide for this issue here. So on behalf of the Lebanese Attorney General, for the record, fuck you, Los Angeles, and fuck you, LA County.
And when you get a chat.
Brandon versus Ohio. How dare you, three ninety-five, four point four nineteen sixty-nine, dirty niggers? How dare you vandalize our community of sound, while the mayor was asleep? Where's the mayor? Where's the fucking mayor? And LAPD gets canceled today. Why? Because they don't want to address the real fucking issue, smoking scam. Yeah, smoking scam, they don't address the real fucking issue. Only you and all your writers, hurrah, because we got the answer. It's called more free speech, more criticism, and more critically-understood fucking words like this motherfucker here telling you and the great men of Bill S. Sidney, up your ass, city attorney, because we're an investigation for fraud, waste, and abuse. Order QSC nineteen eighty-three politely, fuck you.
Anyways, what I was gonna ask is, if I could have you film the left to the right, we try to not have people.
Yeah, I know, audit is usually, she's doing the words work usually, but. How you doing, man? It's a Tuesday. Did you hear they canceled the, uh, commissioners meeting? What's up with that? That's the second time this month, that means there's only two, two meetings.
Come to commissioners?
Ladies and gentlemen, the grandmaster does not require you to, uh, do the public comment of other commenters. Uh, so if you would like, and you hear things that are wildly offensive, such as what we just heard from the previous speaker, you are welcome. Speaker, this is your first in the morning, do not disrupt the speaking while I'm trying to give a master to the general public. If you do so again, you will be subject to removal, as you were said in the report. So, uh, if you hear anything that is wildly offensive, you are more than welcome to step out if you like, pop your head up, and as we said before, we've been on some stick your fingers measures. Uh, we initiate the patients, the fastest way to get through this is to just let them use their time. Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
Uh, one, and then there are one.
Okay, so one minute for the items and one minute for the general.
One, drink, what did this, uh, forty-one, one five, it was in attendance when I came last Tuesday, and it's, it's true that, uh, they are saying that the two little areas of, of forty-one, one five are for homeless. I got a copy. I'm, I'm asking about what the bottom side is, because I listen to the A T, uh, your philosophy, Austin, to learn manuals. I also read, uh, quoting Martin Luther King, talking about, uh, why we're against, uh, you know, the law, and we want to have, talk to him. So I appreciate those, uh, uh, times before, I'm going on public comment. Hello? I'm going on the public comment.
Two, one minute.
Um, Watson Johnson, I know it's spoken, is a, is saying you're thinking that I've been saying that people have been fueled, uh, by the energy, because, by the power of the, hey, they're going to be.
You should do that more often. You ever disappear that effect? You're walking down a hallway, there's somebody like fifty feet behind you, but you keep the door open, and makes him run towards the door, and just to mess with him? That's what she did, that was a little power trip.
I saw him, I know he's in here, so I just could.
That was pretty funny, though.
Well, see, for me, if someone's, I'm not far behind, I open the door, I go, don't worry about it, because I'm not gonna do that.
Fair.
I'm not gonna do that, and I tell people, I'll wait, unless they tell me, no, no?
Yeah.
I'm more than happy to wait for people, but I'm not gonna make them do that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not the intent there, but I don't understand what you're saying. It's just like, let me hurry up, yeah.
I'd like to call for names, Jason Reedy, Red Hunt, Jamie Hattika, Anton Bolivin, Robert G.
That was me.
There you go.
Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Let me have, uh, all items for general, and then, um, general public comment as well.
Okay, so we have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
So starting on item number two, we have a motion talking about bonds. And what we failed to see on this motion, I talked about it, uh, roughly two weeks ago, is the lack of disclosure on how it will be paid out. Now, that is a major issue, because the city is well-known for fraudulent money schemes through Weezer, through the program that Karen Bass, uh, has with her InsideSafe. How is it going to be paid? Is it going to be paid to the personal PayPal of Hugo Soto Martinez? Is it going to go to the Cash App of Karen Bass? Is it going to go maybe to the Venmo of Bass's family friends? We don't know. The reason we don't know that is because it's not listed on the motion like it's supposed to be. After all, this is, of course, talking about government bonds. And what are you supposed to do with government bonds? I'll give you a quick refresher. You're supposed to disclose publicly the method of payment. Again, how is that ga, ma, method of payment going to come forward? Is it a personal PayPal account? It might as well be at this point, because it's exactly why you have the DOJ investigating all the fraudulent schemes involving homelessness initiatives, where you're laundering money through nonprofit programs, making it seem like you're executing legitimate services, but you're not. And we all know it's a scam, few of you ever speak out about it, and in fact, even worse, many of you, including commissioners, actively support the InsideSafe program, which to this day still lacks any sort of accountability and auditing by the controller. Your own mayor is actively refuting auditing of the InsideSafe program. What the ever-loving fuck is that? How is it that your own mayor is actively trying to go against independent auditing by the fucking city's own controller? What kind of fraudulent criminal shit is that? That's basic accounting principles. Your fucking controller should be able to audit the programs the city's spending money on. What the loving fuck is that? Moving on to item number three, we have a housing motion. Why is that important? Again, where the fuck is the money going for all these housing motions? Is it really going to Roche Motels, or is it actually helping eliminate poverty? How do we know for sure that these people are actually getting permanent housing, like is being claimed? Yet we know for a fact, through some of the auditing that Controller Mahia has done, it's barely, maybe two hundred people over the last how many years has gotten any sort of permanent housing, yet half a billion fucking dollars have been expended? That is fraud. All that money going to permanently house barely two hundred people? How the fuck is that now fraud? How the fuck is it that you continue to not publicly disclose where the money is going to, how it's being paid out? For all we know, we the people, it's going to personal PayPal accounts, personal Cash App accounts, personal Venmo accounts. It's only a matter of time till the DOJ knocks on the door, and with that, we move on to general public comment. I have in my hand, and I keep saying this over and over, I am a Heidi Felstein Soto superfan. I absolutely love and support Heidi Felstein Soto, particularly when she gets sanctioned by the fucking court for quarter of a million dollar for a vexatious litigation. She issued four hundred and eighty bullshit subpoenas. The court said, "Fuck that, you're harassing your ex-husband." Quarter of a million dollar sanction for a vilish, for vexatious and malicious litigation. She failed to prosecute me, failed to put me in jail. First activist to beat Heidi Felstein Soto, no fines, no convictions, no nothing. And what does Heidi do? She continues to go out there, act, other activists. This is what Heidi does. I have the one thousand two hundred pay declaration. Citibank fucking wrote, declaring that they will never do business with Heidi Felstein Soto because of corrupt and malicious ways. What city attorney in the history of America is permanently banned from all Citibank locations on planet fucking Earth? Not even just LA, but on planet Earth? What the fuck?
If you have your time, this is prior, I'd like to call for names, Zingwado, Tom J, Anthony Shih, Benjamin Franklin, the item is council, it's general.
And time for the staffer, G, I would speak to all items and general public comments.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
All right, item twenty-two is the preparedness declaration of the homelessness, the InsideStarting Program, where he, where the mayor does these tasks and suites, and then picks up three or four unhoused people, puts them up in a cheap hotel on the other side of the city with no like it food or services. That's the InsideStarting Program, and it's, it's, people are not getting housed, they're not even getting into those homerooms, or anything like that. So, usually looking in the lab, and see what happens, then he's going, and of course, unhoused people, the housing services, uh, suites, and for criminalization. Speaking of which, we have item twenty-six, which is a motion from our glorious budget chair, Katie Barrows Bonn, for another several forty-one eighteen zones in our district. So, forty-one eighteen is hard to unhouse people. It is not in the housing, it is not in the services. It just simps them, a few blocks down the street, with usually all their shelter and stuff, supplies dealt, and taken away for others. And they don't get any housing services, and if they don't just move, or they're not following directions correctly or whatever, then they get arrested. So that's forty-one eighteen. It's not housing, it's not services, nothing like that. So you have item twenty-seven, which is a public hearing related to vacancies. I, I, to the option of the twenty twenty-five from the state senate. So we're supposed to have this hearing before the vote of the judge at all? That's a good question. Did he do the whole process of wrestling? And you did have a public hearing, and everything. Because you're not usually leading a recent, meaning employees, you're letting off hundreds of, of city employees, speaking for my, to the LAPD. I'll just suspend just a little while. Let's see, general comment, uh, general comment, yeah. So we have item thirty-four, which is related to, we're, we sent out a light program, which, that's your, you had to kind of button for that December, but I think you did, you know, some of those. So, so yeah, it's good to have lawyers, attorneys for people being, being targeted for deportation, or where they get the CPO or other torture camps, because Trump just doesn't like that.
Oh, yeah, smoking scan, I always forget. Once I get rolling, I forget. That's why I have audit to remind me. Shout out smoking scan. Somebody go on his, uh, channel and shout out this channel.
That's actually a really good question. And there's so much noise, so much chaos, can anyone even hear us even?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I'm speaking to the general public. So we have, we have the budget, which you did in the most undemocratic, un, way possible, preventing hundreds of people from providing public input so that they can go to lunch. Um, so yes, they have the back, and I guess what you asked is better than what was originally proposed, but it's still a terrible budget. It's still absolutely shameful, but the progressives on this council thought it would be okay to vote for it. They're on LAPD funding the last year, and hundreds of LAPD, hundreds of cities really, yeah, paying for it. I, I don't know.
I'd like to call for names, Charles Vayl, Carlos Nera, Bill Lefebvre, Carolyn M. Magus, Donald Carlon. Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to? Sorry, the mic cut out. You said twenty-two is twenty-eighty public comment?
Yes.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Okay, number twenty-two, uh, you want to adopt a, uh, rule of verse with regard to homelessness. We don't know, uh, how much money I'm talking about, and we need to have audits. Okay, we're against audits, but every time I saw this money being allocated here and there, we never know if we got there. So hopefully those will be coming in here, and we do as part of it. We need to, uh, especially make sure that my people, black people on Skid Row, about a half a million, about thirty, thirty-five blocks of homeless black people. And I expect the black people on this city council to help with their own people, instead of talking about people of color, okay? All my people are down in Skid Row, and I, we didn't have any homeless black people in our community. Here, Skid Row is just, uh, you got this drug dealer down there, that police officer, he's been attacked from drug dealers. There's a reason why you got my people on Skid Row. Now, the, the homeless count, I got a flyer, this last homeless count, and they said they will go through all this, I mean, take the count of Skid Row in one day. I got proof, one day they're gonna count.
Yeah, that's true.
The homeless count is a scam, and the numbers are not right. You cannot count Skid Row a half a million people in one day, and I got a flyer. Okay, so let me tell you something. The ones who are taking this money, they're taking a lot of money, you're giving blood money to their children and your grandchildren, and your descendants, believe me, you're gonna leave this earth, and they're gonna be blood addicts, prostitutes, and everything else, it's prison, that's blood money. Okay, I just want to let you know that. All the money you're getting, you're still, you're doing all this, and you're watching people take it, that's blood money. Okay, number twenty, twenty-two, uh, came here, you want a recovery plan and grant. Recovery who? Who are you recovering? If you haven't recovered, you're recovering, my people wouldn't be on Skid Row. For many years, I've been coming in here ten years before, okay? Yes, I'm a regular, I've been here before, lots of time. It hasn't done anything, can you see that more black people coming to Skid Row? You're putting me the legal aliens, the housing that my people are supposed to have. We're descendants of slaves, okay? Listen, all hands, and as far as immigrants, all of you immigrants, except my people. So we're gonna have to do something, and I can, I can bear that, but I see, we talk, I can get negroes in charge, not doing anything for their own people. And you think these white folks, like, you don't like you, you're gonna go down and strike the question, and they get confused. I want you to do something for your people. Now, my first comment, I'm really here to talk about an additional to the audit. Karen Bass, who's the one, made me get to do the audit. That man is a certified corporate accountant, he has a license, he's a CPA. They call him Patrol, they have different names for him. He can audit the city, that money belongs to us, Karen Bass, all, all this money. You don't want to audit it because you're stealing, you've been stealing. I was going to the housing units, I was going to the committee meetings, and I need to address a working area that used to be under the book housing. And I was talking, I was looking at one area, one area. And what area was that? Our people, he died, I'm like, he didn't even credit, but he's no longer, I saw him a quarter mile.
You know what she's saying, it's true, right?
That's the area that weren't being built, that money's all in your pocket. So I know it's a scam, but I'm gonna put a quarter mile, I have proof that it's not a scam.
He's a good, he's a good person, friend.
That's another scam, that's what, that's what they're saying, everything. You ain't.
Yeah, I've been watching, like, ABC Seven, I've been watching, like, all of this.
I'd like to call for names.
Yeah. It's Moneyline, it's, it's very, just, that's what it was. Good for you, though, man.
No, it's amazing.
You're seeing, you're seeing fifteen drummers up there.
Yeah.
Literally.
It's amazing how we're in this shit hole, people are less than six weeks.
Think about this, like, just the same as your life, if you stay on the sidelines, there's a higher GDP than about twelve American states together, so. That makes, that makes, absolutely make rock, what I want to say about. Of every industry here, the human, there's oil, there's tech, there's medicine, there's research. And you can, it's, it's, and yet we're in the shit hole.
Their foundation, their foundation is built on a wall on Tuesday. They shape how people experience the city and how they treat it. Recently, I watched a taxpayer fund, who recently, they left black cases, they're all on the sidelines. They're already two hours, four years, and they're the corporate spenders, kind of each of them. Leaving this color to pay on finish, um, you know, completely, and that's respect, that's the street. People who wants respect, they're creating other respectable.
It's the biggest, you know, weird. Public infrastructure issues, like, how schools and work and sidewalks are the biggest lawsuit payout the city has. The second is LAPD killings. Can you believe that?
Oh, yeah.
Schools are a bigger issue in San.
At least one.
My name is City Council, I'm an artist, general public comment is January twenty-seventh.
I'm just sort of a street artist.
Good, you got a YouTube channel?
No, I'm not, I guess.
I'm not a publicist, I give up advocate, with a neighbor, I'm a public advocate, and a community advocate. Seeing that we can do water, we can budget, and we, for being creative and reducing the number of layoffs, and for saving as many lives more as possible to improve city services and public economy, our city budget process. I would also like to send an invitation, please join the budget advocate at City Hall for your council budget. Yay, sorry, you can first, you can first. And for the public, please visit budgetadvocate.org, or more, please, type in your username and your website.
When more, please, I'd like to type in your newsletter and your website, please. Uh, you still have, I'm a member of the city council, the mayor, and the team who work directly with community advocates.
I consider military.
About we can't afford city. If we depend on you, we depend on, uh, provide services. But item twenty-seven, please, Mr. President, I urge the, as a city council, with your city jobs, including vacancies, many city departments, non-sourced, um, city departments are understaffed and are any of the employees and people that you provide city services for all and willing loans, myself included. I urge the city council to be making, um, also, until we are filled, particularly non-sourced to play a position that we are absolutely required to be able to, non-sourced, um, to play a position to provide critical services.
That guy in the yellow.
Thank you, please do the right thing. I am the public comment.
He wants to join L A P D, but I told him, listen, man, as zippy as he sounds, he's, he's too sweet.
Yeah, I know.
He's, he's actually a really good person. He would get eaten alive.
Yeah, I'd like to go to fix it, you know?
Well, it's not that they would bully you, they would bully you. Hard hazing, even worse than whatever there might be in the military.
To seek justice for the public, and I'm here to seek justice for this city council and its members, because clearly, Zoo Director Barrett has clearly disrespected all of us. I recall the actions of the Zoo Director Barrett for seeking Guili Antena out of the zoo and transporting to Tulsa. When she went silent, that was worse. She went into hiding, what does that mean? Clearly, this Barrett wasn't interested in an open discussion in the city council for Gili Antena to his next year.
They commissioned him, but they canceled it.
They always do their shit. Only two they have this month.
Yeah.
But their bylaws are supposed to have them do one a month or one a week, unless there's some crazy fucking circumstances there. There isn't.
So we have to move on to the next speaker. I understand the time goes by quickly, but for everyone, um, if you would like to provide additional comments, you can do so by writing at L A's public, L A council comment dot com. We're not trying to penalize anybody, but we do have to provide the same amount of time for everyone.
We also have tomorrow.
Uh, Mr. President, there are not more, uh, people to speak to.
Oh, yeah, man.
All right, so to everybody here to show up in public comments, Mr. President.
Oh, that's it. The rest of the shit show. So they used to take virtual public comment? I've written two letters at this point, just in the past week, for, of course, to get virtual public comment back for city council and council committees. The argument basically is that they already have all the necessary infrastructure, the licenses, the microphones, the cameras. They just choose not to because then people would call them and shit on them. That's why they stopped.
Fourteen nine.
So.
I think everybody should have a chance to say.
That's a fucking good, man. It's a free country.
All right, open the roll, item twenty-six.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Can I ask for a no?
Cause I remember some.
It happened all the time. He got kicked out when they were appointing Jim McDonald. He got literally cut off mid-sentence because he had a criticism of Jim McDonald, like that, literally kicked out of the room, gone.
You can't do that.
What's, interestingly enough, when they do shit like that, when they cut you off in public comment, it actually makes every decision, on every motion, on that agenda, null and void, until what's called a cure and correct is issued, where basically you stop the meeting, you reopen public comment altogether, everybody gets to go over and do public comment uninterrupted, and then any decisions you make thereafter stand. Otherwise, all those decisions are null and void. On illegal technicality, Jim McDonald, back in October of twenty twenty-four, around October twenty-fifth, he is not appointed correctly. He got kicked out during this public comment period. That's not how you do it. I have it on my YouTube channel. It's like a, it's the best thing ever. You got kicked out during the Jim McDonald appointment. I recorded it. It was CD seven.
Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, I saw it. I, I put a query correct for that day, too. It was bullshit.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the intent of the amended budget act that, moving forward.
Um, so this one is called Film the Government.
Should the emergency order expire, that we would be able to utilize existing city properties and be able to pay our bills, because it's gonna be pretty important, whether we're in emergency or not to pay our bills.
I've got other channels, I have, they do different stuff. One does police encounters, another does these meetings and whatnot, so.
Have a discussion here that the emergency itself should expire.
Appreciate you, bro. Hope to see you more and, you know, again, congratulations on another degree, man. And best luck with your career.
After the city council reviews the quarterly reports, et cetera, et cetera. The city council may find that the need for the emergency order exists.
I was gonna go to the DA's office and drop off another letter.
You have a video of it?
Yeah, yeah, it's my year-long Brown Act violations complaint.
Also, you, do you have, you're able to do it?
So.
Are you gonna help drop it down?
No, 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 I, it's not you get a lawsuit, I just serve it, and I say, here you go, and then they make them give me a stamped copy. And that's.
Wait for response.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, I delivered it to everybody except for the DA's office. There's this one lady that works at the clerk's office, she's such an asshole, dude. Except when there's, there's guy, usually towards either early in the day or late in the afternoon.
She doesn't play the dominant role.
Yeah, she's like, oh, we don't take this. I'm like, shut up. You're the clerk, you're supposed to stamp it. It's not your job to litigate.
Yeah.
It's, you're not the lawyer here.
And you go to the county board meeting at eleven, it starts.
Is it today?
Nah.
Holy, is it the five hundred West Temple?
Right up the street, right, right up the temple.
Five hundred West Temple? Okay. County Board? Yeah, I'll go, fuck it. Yeah, I'll go.
It starts at eleven.
Okay, I'm gonna run my ass over there.
Maybe you can hand that into them, too.
I have to fucking literally, all right, I'm gonna.[1798.02]